Ready? Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Clarkdale for Tuesday, July 8, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the Clark Memorial Clubhouse. Roll call is Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Babbitt Pierce,
President.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hunzetter.
Here.
And please note that Mayor Prudhomme Bauer is here. We have a quorum. Before we get started, let me just sort of tell you the order of business for this meeting. We're going to, in a minute, vote to go into possible executive session. We probably will. And the five of us and our attorneys will leave the room. So you get to stay here, have conversation. Let us get through the executive session, which should be a relatively short one. And then we will resume the meeting and the agenda items. So just want to tell you how we're going to handle this. So let's move on to item three, which is possible vote to enter executive session. The council may vote to discuss the following matters in executive session pursuant to ARS, Section 38-431-03A3, legal advice from town attorney, and Section 38-431-03A4, discussion and consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the town. And the item on the executive session is the Yavapai Apache Water Settlements. So I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Babbitt Pierce in second and by Councilmember Jones to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none. Motion carried. We are now in executive session. See you in a few. I'd like to say we're back in regular session or at special session at 5:20 PM. We're out of executive session. So we have the resumption of the meeting. And the first item on item four is the Yavapai Apache Nation Water Settlements. We're going to have a brief presentation by Susan Guthrie, and then we'll go from there. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, I'm really excited that you all are here today to share this very special moment with us. We, I realized this morning that we were going to come out and vote on this and that a lot of people in the community probably don't know a lot about what this even is. And so we put together this PowerPoint just to give you a little bit of background, and then we're happy to answer any questions. So just for background, you know that Clarkdale has been working to secure water rights for the town's current and future needs. And we have been in negotiations with the Yavapai Apache Nation on this settlement for years. And I'm using that kind of vague term because everyone I ask has a different amount of time. Susan, it was, you came up with 13 years? So many years. Yeah, many, many years this has been in the making and lots of work in the last couple of years. This has really gained traction and a lot of discussions and meetings with lawyers. And I'm just very excited that we're in this place at this time. The state and federal government are responsible for securing water rights for tribes, and the Yan settlement is one of the last to be completed in Arizona. Obviously, the Verde River is a large part of the history and culture of the Yavapai Apache Nation. So there's a lot of focus on making sure that we preserve that for the future. And then the Gila River adjudication is making its way through the courts. And there is some bearing on the adjudication by this agreement, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So, little help, Charity? Thanks. So why is this important to the people of Clarkdale? Thank you. First of all, it recognizes the claims of our neighbors and our partners, the Yavapai Apache Nation. These are their historic lands. And as I said, the river is a very important part of that culture. So I think that that in itself is a very important piece of this agreement. But it also, for Clarkdale, it results in acknowledgement of our water claims and our water budget being recognized by Yan and the other parties to the agreement. That's a really important piece for the people of Clarkdale. This also allows the nation to petition the US Congress for recognition of their claims and this agreement. And there's a lot more to that agreement. But us signing this, along with the other local communities, paves the way for that. And it has already been introduced to the Congress by Senator Kelly's office. So it's starting to make its way through that process. It also results in each community in the Verde Valley establishing a recognized water budget. And somebody I had read this today kind of took water budget in a little bit of a negative way, like it was a bad thing to have to say how much you're going to use. But I actually view it as a really good thing to get a recognition of what our current and future needs are going to be as a community, but also that the other communities are doing that because, you know, one aquifer is connected to the other. You know, we all share this resource. And having everyone establish a water budget, I think, is very responsible and a good thing for us to establish. It also calls for each community to provide for reporting on water use. And we don't really have that to each other right now. So, and also on new wells that might be drilled. So there's going to be a lot more communication among the communities and Yan of what we're all individually doing because what we each do affects each other. And it could also result in a new water supply through the Craigan Pipeline because Yavapai Apache Nation, as part of their settlement, is going to have a pipeline coming from the CC Craigan Reservoir. And in the future, that could open up a new water source for Clarkdale. So that's very exciting. So, big question I get all the time, does this mean there will be no adjudication? So in one word, no, that doesn't, it doesn't mean that. There still will be adjudication processed because there are other claim holders like SRP and private property owners and ranchers who may have senior claims to Clarkdale. So we will still have to participate in adjudication. But having this agreement in place certainly paves the way for a much more streamlined and, I think, quicker resolution to our part of the adjudication. So we do feel like this is very positive to that process for Clarkdale. Okay, so this slide is the first page of a several-page document, but it does outline what our water budget is. And the methodology behind us establishing our water budget is we looked at every single parcel in Clarkdale, and we looked at what it's zoned and what's the maximum number of dwelling units that might be on that parcel. And then based upon our average daily use for all residents in Clarkdale, we then extrapolated out what our probably future use was going to be. And we were able to include potential future annexation. We also included, in a separate area of the agreement, people who might be on their private wells and may need to convert to town water. So we took all of that into consideration. And you can see that, if I had glasses on, I could see it. Our base water budget is 1,889 acre feet per year. The potential future annexation lands and the well conversions is an additional 633 acre feet for a total of 2,522 acre feet per year. So in the agreement, there, you know, it's a lengthy agreement, but I tried to pluck out the things that I thought were most important in agreement. And I'm just going to go through a few of these for you. But again, it establishes our water budget to meet our current and future needs. And that water budget is now recognized by the other parties to the agreement. That's very important for us as a community. It also establishes a water budget for Yan. And as you all know, we have Yan neighborhoods in our community, and we provide them both water and sewer services. So now they also have a water budget that is not part of our water budget, which again benefits us. It identifies mitigation. If anybody exceeds their water budget, how do we deal with that situation? It requires parties to encourage the use of effluent. And this is really exciting to me because, you know, for water in public parks, things like that, we have A-plus effluent, and it just gets sprayed. And there's not a beneficial use of it right now. So I think many of you know, we applied for a grant to bring Purple Pipe to Salomon Genie Park as part of the renovation. So that'll be kind of our first foray into really making this a beneficial use and to, you know, decreasing our freshwater consumption. And hopefully, if that project works, we can continue on that trend. It identifies a process for well development. It excludes water from Craigan or Yan CAP water from our annual water budget. So if in the future we buy water from SRP or from Yan, that does not count against our water budget. Our water budget is more about what we're taking out of the ground. It acknowledges that Clarkdale is the water and wastewater provider for Yan lands in Clarkdale. It also reserves the Yan effluent for their future use. So once, you know, this is their water budget. So once we give them and provide the water, then that effluent really belongs to Yan since it was part of their water budget. It acknowledges that water and wastewater infrastructure on Yan lands is their infrastructure and that the infrastructure that comes up to the edge of their lands is the town's infrastructure. It establishes a process to ensure there is no harm to the Clarkdale system should Yan decide to disconnect from the Clarkdale water or wastewater system. And it goes into some discussion of how that process will take place. Outlines the reporting requirements for each entity, and it confirms water rights for each party. So that's in a nutshell what this big agreement provides for us. And I'm more than happy to take questions from the council or from the public. So thank you so much.
So exciting. Forget to turn the microphone on. Why don't we go ahead and have council members, if you have questions or comments you'd like to make at this moment?
I think the first thing I'd like to say is congratulations to Chairwoman and to the nation. I think this is an incredible feat. And it is exciting for me to see the nation taking the lead in this for all of us across the Verde Valley. So thank you. The other thing I'd like to talk about is just the term "water budget." So many of you may know that I worked for Friends of the Verde River for many years. And in those days, Marsha can attest, if you had said "water budget" in a public meeting, there was a good chance you would have felt, get yourself get hit in the back of the head because people were so afraid of what that would mean for their communities. And so for me, I am with Susan in that we establishing a water budget and that a water budget will be established across the valley for all of us is just, for me, a cooperative mechanism. It's a way for us to look at water cooperatively and with real, you know, stops and things that were, and to encourage us to be more creative in how we use our water, how we share our water resources. So that change, to me alone, to hear the term "water budget" and that we will all have water budgets is just remarkable. So I'll stop there, but I just think this is fabulous.
Thank you. I am thrilled to be part of this historic agreement for all of the reasons that Councilmember Jones mentioned. We talk a lot about partnerships and that the Town of Clarkdale really can't function on our own and with part of the reservation within our boundaries. You all are one of our biggest and most important partners, and I am so excited that we were able to do this together. And I also just want to thank our partners at Senator Kelly's office, who really supported this work. So, thank you.
Yeah.
One of the issues in rural Arizona for the whole state has been local control of our water resources. And I see this as a major step in establishing our local control. And I am so proud to be a part of this. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Mine's short and sweet. I agree with every one of you. And this is a monumental day. It's been a lot of negotiation that's gone into this thus far. A lot of work for the lawyers. I appreciate everyone's support. And it's just remarkable seeing everyone work together to achieve this monumentous event.
I will go ahead and hold my comments for a few moments. I think there are a few people who want to speak from the audience. And I will start first with tribal chair, Tanya Lewis. Would you like to give a couple of comments? Yes, if you could come up to the microphone and state your name. It's on.
It's on, okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those here in attendance because this is very important, as I have shared with the Town Council before when I came, that because this is very important to not only the Yavapai Apache Nation, but it's also important to the Verde Valley. We, this is our home, and we're here to work together. So I'm going to introduce myself in my traditional language because this is an important part of who we are as native people. So dagadeshi Tanya Lewis, fonse yavapai delje e nation nantan. Deen shlen, delje e hati, shima eto Louis hoce. Shita, Lyman Louis hoce ne. Stanley Walna, in shling, ashon ahia. Thank you. My name is Tanya Lewis. I'm the Chairwoman for the Yavapai Apache Nation. I am the daughter of the late Ethel and Lyman Lewis here of Clarkdale. My parents lived on the reservation. I was born and raised here in Clarkdale. I went to school at the Clarkdale Jerome Elementary. I also went to Mingus Union High School, a graduate there. And I also got my education through Yavapai College, where I hold a business management degree. So my heart is here in the Verde Valley. I've done my education here. I did a short stint at ASU, which I was able to be an alumni through the leadership program that they have through ASU. But I am deep-rooted here in the Verde Valley. I've lived here my whole life. I raised my family in Camp Verde, where I live today in our Tunleye community. But this has been an amazing journey. We have worked in partnership for several years now. But the water settlement has been with us for decades. This has been decades of work we've done since 1974. We're at our 50 years working on this and to come today and know that our bill has been dropped in the House by our supporter and our sponsor for the bill, Representative David Schweikert. So he and also, and then, Sue, if I miss anybody. We also have Representative Debelesko. We had Representative Juan Siskomani. We have Representative Stanton also signed on to sponsor, to co-sponsor the bill. And that happened yesterday. So it's been amazing. We do, I believe it's HR 8949 is our bill number. And then, of course, it's going through the Senate's office as well, which we have reached out, as stated, Senator Kelly, looking to sponsor this bill. It's been amazing, an amazing journey. And even though we worry about the word "water budget," as Councilmember Jones has expressed, is that it's okay because what it does is it ensures the water for the Verde Valley. It ensures real water to the Verde Valley. And that is what's more important to all of us, that we have that. Because that's one thing that I have shared since my leadership. Prior to this, I was also the vice-chairwoman three years ago. I'm in my second year as a chairwoman. I served as a tribal council member as well from 2010 to 2013. I've served as an executive assistant under two chairmanships. So I've been working hands-on for over a decade on this, me personally. So to see this come through is amazing. Prior to that, of course, I worked in the casino for 10 years. And then I've worked with the nation since 2006 in government in social services and human resources. So I've worked in different aspects. And I've worked for the Yavapai Apache Nation. That's why I say my whole heart is here. And even though it is important and it is, it is an honor to be here to see the support of our communities. Of course, I grew up in a time where our relationships were strained. But it's wonderful to stand here today and be that we are true partners. We're true friends, and we are all good neighbors to each other. We're good stewards of the land and exceptional people to the water. And that is amazing to me. There's been a lot of hard work. A year ago, we sat down, five of us in a room, and said, "If you're in, we're in." And this is where we are. That was, I believe, in August, we had that conversation. And yesterday, we have a House bill that was dropped. So I thank my staff, of course, Sue is here, Montgomery, an interpreter, Robin. I think our internal Attorney General, Scott Canty. All of our attorneys that have been on the team, all of the council members that have been part of this with us. And it's been a great journey. And this is a true negotiation we have done. We've given our whole heart, and it's amazing to be in a room with so many people that have the expertise, that have the legacies, who have the knowledge, who have the education, who know the political functions to get us where we're at today. So even for my community here in Clarkdale, this is my home. Clarkdale's my home. I raised my family, I reside now in Camp Verde, but this has always been my home here. And it's always good that we can be here together and be where we're at today. So thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to address the public, for the Town of Clarkdale, to be here for us and just to work side by side with each other. It's been amazing. Ashon ahia, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Then I'd like to have former Mayor Doug Van Gossick come up for a moment, and then we'll get to other people in the audience who would like to speak. And I called Doug up because Doug has been in this business for quite a while. So it's a big day for you, my friend.
I've even gotten notes. And I never have notes. Well, congratulations to the council and the staff of the Town of Clarkdale, to the Yavapai Apache Nation, and to the three attorneys, one of whom has been here on every day of every decision made on this, and that's Susan Montgomery, my probably most admired water attorney in the state of Arizona. And I think somebody whose name is going to go down in the books from now on will know about it. The Yavapai Apache Nation and the Town of Clarkdale, along with the other communities in the Verde Valley, have entered into an agreement that I think is the most substantial single action ever taken by Clarkdale. And you guys are right in the middle of that. And you've done a great job of understanding what was going on and letting your staff help you, guide you along on this process to do something that really had to be done. And I think that, the way I see this agreement is as a step along toward adjudication, which has been such an unwieldy process for 20-something years now. Another 20 years probably to go. But when the Town of Clarkdale, the Yavapai Apache Nation, and the other communities in the Verde Valley go to the adjudication court when they finally do en masse, I think they're going to have a very different kind of place to talk about this with that adjudication court. So I've always thought that if you could get SRP and the Yavapai Apache Nation and these communities together, we could have a de facto adjudication that just needs blessing by the court. And I hope to see that happen. I think it will because of what you guys are doing now. This takes away the biggest bugaboo of water planning in any kind of a place like Clarkdale or the Verde Valley. And that is the uncertainty about where your legality lies, what's going to happen to that legality, how much water are you going to be able to provide to your citizens? Where are you going to get that water? Who's going to be on your side or against you in that process? And this settlement takes a lot of that uncertainty away and allows you to do the proper planning with the assurance that you're going to be able to do the things that you're talking about because you've got a framework now that everybody's part of. And it just, that's an amazing, amazing step for you guys. Well, I think I've said everything I need to say. I could stand up here forever. I'm just super proud of the Town of Clarkdale. I'm incredibly gracious and grateful to the Yavapai Apache Nation for bringing this all together. I've been working on it since, I don't know, we figured 11 years, something like that, quite a while. And to see it come to fruition is just maybe the finest time in my life as far as Clarkdale is concerned. And I want to thank your town manager. I'll take you out to dinner later on.
Thank you so much.
It's Taco Tuesday.
Thank you, Doug. Now, I saw at least one hand go up. So if you want to come up and speak, please come up to the microphone and state your name. You have to come to the microphone, my dear. Come on up. And your name?
Pam Ziltner. So my question is, does the Yavapai Apache Nation have reservation land other than what's here at Clarkdale?
Yes, they do. At their main community is in the middle Verde, over near Camp Verde and Tunleye Community and communities throughout parts of Camp Verde and the Rimrock area. Is that pretty much it?
All in the Verde Valley.
Correct.
So those are all connected to this?
Yes. Yeah, each community, Camp Verde and Cottonwood, will be doing a similar agreement.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor, I just, I failed to introduce our two attorneys. So I just want to recognize our water attorney, Matt Rojas, who, I mean, has just worked for years because he, yes. So he was actually the town's water attorney when Mayor Van Gossick was still in office. And I had old files that pointed Matt. And so I went and found Matt again. And I said, "Please come help us." So he's done an amazing job. He's really, clearly, he and Susan Montgomery are leaders in the state on water law. We're very, very lucky to have him at our side. So thank you, Matt. Appreciate you. And then you all know Stephen Polk, our town attorney, has been right there with us, just helping me get through and understand all the nuances of this agreement. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public? Yes, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
I'm Mary Shaquen. And I guess I want to build on what Councilmember Jones said. This is so exciting, I mean, for all of us. And there are some of us who've been involved in water for a long time on so many levels. And I hope we use this as an opportunity to reach out to the entire Verde Valley and share with them the excitement and truthfully educate them about what this really means. Because there is such a misinformation or disinformation and misunderstanding. I mean, it's true in Arizona, we fight over water. And it's time to quit fighting and to understand how we can all work together for the good of the entire Verde Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, I'll just give a few, and then I'll ask for the motion if I could. This is a hu- This is a hugely historic water settlement for the nation. Thank you, for you. And it brings certainty to Clarkdale's water future. I didn't think I'd get emotional about it, but there's a lot of emotion in this. It does create a framework, a concrete framework, that assures us how much water we can use within an agreed-upon budget. Budgets aren't bad. It acknowledges our historic water rights. That's huge for us. It offers us access for additional new water supply down the road. Thought that would never happen. It has. And it supports, of course, great efforts at using water conservation and water reuse methods, some that are just new and that might be applicable to us down the road. And it promotes, as everybody has said, cooperative water stewardship in the Verde Valley. We're all going to be at the table. We're going to be standing proud that we've been able to take care of our water future here in the Verde Valley. It acknowledges your water rights, the Yavapai Apache Nation's historic rights, and reminds us that we are on the traditional lands of the Yavapai and Apache people. Thank you, Tanya. Your leadership has been incredible. Thank you, Susan Montgomery. Yours too. You have, your valued and focused leadership has made this agreement a reality. I can't say enough for that. And to our town manager, our town attorney, Stephen Polk, and Clarkdale's wonderful, amazing water attorney, Matt Rojas, for working attentively with the Yavapai Apache Nation in crafting this historic agreement. Clarkdale's water future is more secure today because of this. And as I always remember, water is our life. With that, I will take a motion. Laura, Councilmember Laura Jones.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the water rights settlement agreement among the Yavapai Apache Nation, the U.S. Government, and the town of Clarkdale, and that we authorize the town manager and mayor to execute all needed documents in connection with connection therewith, sorry.
And I will second that motion.
It's been moved by Councilmember Jones and seconded by Vice Mayor Hunt Sutter to approve the water settlement agreement among the Yavapai Apache Nation, the United States, and the town of Clarkdale, and to authorize the town manager and the mayor to execute all documents. Say it, Laura.
In connection therewith.
In connection therewith. With that, I think I'll take roll call on the motion. Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Babbitt Pierce.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hunt Sutter.
Absolutely, yes.
And Mayor Prudhomme Bauer votes yes. Is there any opposition to this motion? Hearing none. Motion carried. We have a settlement. Let's see. We have, one item is I need a motion to adjourn this meeting because we have no further items on this agenda. I'll take a motion.
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Babbitt Pierce and seconded by Councilmember O'Neill to adjourn this wonderful meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned at 5:52. And we have a little celebration in the other room. So thank you all.